I'll stop picking my nose then.
Don't wipe that on me.
I wanted popcorn.
Exactly, now you want some popcorn?
Nah, nah.
Run over to Ted's quick.
I'll switch, well, I was gonna, no, I won't do that either. I was gonna say I'll switch to Reese's Peanut Butter Cups.
Okay, welcome to the Tuesday, August 19th, Special City Council Meeting. Would you all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Weir.
Yes.
Smock.
Yes.
Clemmons.
Here.
Dewater.
Morris.
Here.
Or rather here, you got me going already, Dottie.
I'll have a motion to approve the agenda, please.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Tonight, we have presentations. Right now, it's gonna be Josh with Motorola. Hi, Josh.
Maybe it's the guy that was at the door. Oh, it's on there.
You've admitted him twice, but then he jumps out.
Okay.
What he's got going on. There he is again.
Okay, you can hear that.
Yeah, so he joins and then it jumps out.
We're a row.
We're experiencing a little bit of technical difficulty at this moment.
That might be on our end, because he keeps trying to join and it's not going. I'm trying, it's updating.
Yeah, because Misty was on for quite some time. When we were doing the trial. Ben, do you have his number? Okay. No. He's coming back. He's having a hard time connecting. I do. Okay. If she's still there.
Yeah, I'm gonna see if he can't get in that way, Deanne, in the meeting. Drop him again.
It dropped him again. Nope, there he is. Hi, Josh.
I'm so sorry, guys, I was trying to join on my phone, and it was not letting me.
Okay. Well, welcome to the Special City Council Meeting. You have the floor.
Okay, um, let me pull this up here. I guess, do you guys have any questions about what's been proposed? Or has a proposal been put in place, or put in front of you guys?
Yes, the council has received proposals from all of them. Just really tell us about your product, your company.
Okay, so, my name's Josh, I'm the Regional Sales Manager for Motorola. I cover Iowa and Nebraska, I am local, I live in Newton, Nebr- uh, Newton, Iowa. And, so I am the local person for you guys. Are you guys considering the VB400 or the V700 option?
Uh, 700.
The 700, okay. And I know there's a handful of quotes that were sent over, so I'm trying to pull the right one up, so I can speak to what you guys were proposed. Do you have the quote number?
Yes, I do. You hear me okay, Josh?
Yes.
Yep, 263-1579.
Okay, so it looks like you guys were given the quote for videos of service with both the M500 and the V700 body worn cameras. The M500 is a, is our dash camera solution. It is capable of doing five different video streams. And looking at your quote, it looks like we're doing two streams, the front and the prisoner camera. That front camera is capable of doing, and will do both narrow and panoramic view. So depending on the disposition of the video, will determine what type of video is saved. So, in some instances where it's just a traffic stop, there's no reason to save a higher storage video like a wide angle view. So we would just save just the narrow image, just the narrow view of that camera. In the instance of like a felony traffic stop or felony arrest, where something may have been thrown out of the vehicle, et cetera, it would save all views. And that is configurable by the agency, so your agency can set that up. The V700 body camera is our flagship body camera. It's capable of doing live streaming video down the road if the agency ever pursues, wants to pursue that. Same with the M500. The V700 does come with a detachable battery, and the agency will get spare battery with each body camera. So they'll be able to keep a spare battery if one goes dead during the shift, if the officer forgot to charge it, or if it was just a very busy shift that day, and it drains the battery a lot quicker, they have that peace of mind. The battery is also able to be charged in the car during the officer's shift. So if he does deplete one battery, he can take that depleted battery and put it in the dock and start to charge that battery while he's on patrol. The DVR with the M500 is a 1 terabyte solid state drive. It's going to, why that solid state drive is important is it's going to preserve the video in the event of a car crash or a very rough, like road trap, road crossing, or going through very rough roads and say like a pursuit. It's gonna preserve that video, make sure it's safe and not become corrupted by any way. You also get a transfer station, so that's gonna allow a mass updates to the body warrants. It will get all knocked out real quick and back out to the field. With the video as a service, the body cameras get a new, or that, sorry. With the video as a service, the police department will get a new body camera every three years. So they don't have to worry about that technology falling behind. They don't have to worry about if this body camera's gonna be able to last me two more years before the next contract. They get that refresh. It also comes with a five-year no-fault warranty with an advanced replacement. So if your officers do get in a fight or a scuffle and scratches the lens or breaks the camera, we can replace that camera at no cost. We have had officers get into pursuits and lose a camera in like a, in a stream. I had one officer call me, he was mid-February, he's like, hey, I lost my, in a stream, and I don't wanna go back in the water to get it. I said, we'll take care of you. So in the event that you don't have a camera to return to Motorola, contact myself or the inside rep, Tommy, and we'll get you taken care of, we'll get you a new back, or a new camera out to you guys. We just need to have some sort of incident number so we can refer back to that with our RMA team. The M500 also does have that five-year extended warranty, so that camera, its lifespan in the vehicle is going to be covered under warranty. With the cloud option, as a service, it's unlimited data. So if you're using 1 terabyte of video storage or 100 terabytes of video storage, it's not gonna change the cost for the agency. The only thing that we ask is that the agency's retention standards meets the state's best practices. So if the state says, hey, maintain traffic stops for 60 days, misdemeanor's two years, felonies for seven years, we just ask that they align with that recommendation. I kind of went over a lot, is there any questions about that?
What is the lifespan on your body cams?
So we warranty them for five years, but they would be replaced at three years. We like to think, or I'm trying to, trying to change the perception that these body cameras, they live a very hard life. I was a police officer in Nebraska for eight years. I broke my body camera probably once a year. So we really want to emphasize the warranty, but also that change the mindset of think of these more like cell phones. They're not, they're not able to last 10 years like a radio can. They just, it'll live a much harder life than most things.
And the way I gather it is this is basically an ever-leaving subscription, because the cameras themselves, without the subscription, can't really be used because they're not really recording anywhere for retention and...
So, these cameras do work on Motorola's backend. If you want to maintain the data on-premise at the police department, we can do an on-premise solution. Our recommendation is cloud. The agency does retain ownership of the data. So if you guys decide to leave Motorola for a different vendor, that storage is free for you guys to come and retrieve. But as far as like if it's cross-platform compatible, can use our camera on an Axon backend or a GTAC backend, that's not feasible. And I don't know anybody who does have that platform other than like, would be like an Amazon camera that you would buy, like a GoPro or something.
So, Dottie, to your question as far as how I view it and how long are they gonna last? As long as we keep the subscription. So, because basically we're paying the annual fee for the full service, the warranty's in them, if they're replacing them every three before the warranty, that's a new warranty, so effectively to me, instead of viewing this as a one-time kind of capital purchase and how long is our investment gonna take us to, it's now turned into more of an operational expenditure and that's just that budget item every year. And then they've always got them working and set. If we choose to stay, that's the only thing with it is, you're, it's a, everybody does it. So when I say this, Josh, this isn't a shot at Motorola, it's a lock-in. So it's, you're there, you're invested in it, so you're gonna keep the subscription. To change is gonna cost you more money because obviously now you've gotta replace all the equipment again. So if we look at it from that standpoint, it's really gonna turn into a, just under, the first five years anyway, is just under 12,000 a year, more or less, with a single upfront cost of that hardware.
Yeah, and then at the refresh, if you guys are happy with Motorola and you want to lock in your price longer, at that refresh, you can do a contract extension. And typically what a contract extension gets you is the newest version of the camera that's out. So the camera before the B3, or before the V700 was the V300. Agencies who bought that, when it came time for their refresh and the 700 was out, they had the option to either just finish out their five years and get 300s, or if they wanted to, they can sign an extension and then they got the V700 body cameras. So it's also a good way to make sure that your technology doesn't fall behind and that you're not gonna see a huge, or you're not gonna be asked for a huge investment 10 years down the road when, when like a backend is end of support.
How long is the initial contract?
Five years.
Five, okay, that's what I thought.
And Josh, we've talked about the body cams quite a bit. We of course then still have the in-car cameras. Are those on a similar warranty and refresh cycle the same way? Or is it just you buy them and they're on a warranty?
So we don't, we don't refresh the dash cameras every three years like we do the body cameras, simply because they live a different life. They're in a, they're in a car that's typically climate-controlled when the officer's on shift, when they're running. So those typically last and will typically outlast the warranty that's offered. The warranty is out to five years. With the video as a service, they come standard with that five-year warranty. And then the other thing with our, with how we warranty things is we don't require that you send it to a Motorola-certified installer. So if the chief wants to install them in the garage and he happens to cut a wiring harness, we're not gonna penalize the agency for that, we'll just send a new harness, no questions asked. Or if a car gets in a cruise, if a cruiser gets in a crash and something's damaged on that, we're gonna take care of that camera. During that, during that contract. At the end of that five years, the agency does have the option to keep those cameras and just pay for the licensing or sign a new contract and get all new dash cameras. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yep, and then at that contract, the body cameras, you said when the extension was signed, it's, you allowed them to upgrade to the latest cameras with, the body cameras, with no charge there, correct? That was a perk of the upgrade? Or the...
That's the perk of, that's the perk of the contract extension, yeah.
Is the similar thing done for the, or what is kind of the hardware cost? Are we looking at repurchasing the car cameras, you know, after the five-year, even if we sign, you know, extension or whatever?
Yeah, at the end of that five years, as far as perks go, there are loyalty discounts that would be applicable at that point.
Okay, but that one's not a equal swap anyways, or a $0 swap? There would be some costs involved with the car cameras?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, I'm sorry, those, so those costs, it's not like you're paying 8,000 per camera upfront? It's divided up over the five years?
Yes, yep.
Any other questions?
Chief Dean's coming.
Yeah, Chief Dean.
Hey, Josh, Mike Dean, Police Chief.
Hey, sir.
Can we talk a little bit about the software side of things? You know, when you have officers, multiple officers involved in an incident, and you, you know, wanna take that information from the body cam and the car camera and package that all into, say, one incident, how does this software? Is that something manually that the officer's gotta go in and tag everything? Or how does that work? And can you kind of explain that to the council?
Yeah, so there is a bit of a manual process to it unless there's a Motorola CAD software or if we're integrating with another software. So if you have like Todd Technologies and you're, and we have the integration, I didn't see an integration on this quote, so it would be more of a manual process. But that, what that process looks like is your officer goes in and he ties a case number to it. The software should be able to recognize, hey, two case numbers are the same, at the same date and time that the recording happened, and then you guys can link that video together. When you link it together, it creates a nice case folder and a case file that you can then send a web link to your prosecutors with a secure code. Typically, that code is gonna be either the subject, the suspect's date of birth or social security number, so, or the last four, their social security number, so that way only those with intimate knowledge of the case can access that video. And that video's, the link's live date is programmable from anywhere from 30 days all the way to 120 days. So your prosecutors can share that link with a defense attorney and so forth. If you have a video that, that is part of a Freedom of Information Act request, your department will be able to access the redaction portion of this, redact those files. It stays with that case file, so that way if there's been any changes made, they, people can see those changes. And then that case file can be exported cleanly. It does not change the original file. All the original metadata, metafiles will still be in place, so there's, the case integrity remains intact. There's also a, a audit trail of the video. So if anybody were to access that file for anything other than authorized use, you're gonna be able to see that and take appropriate actions. Did I answer your questions, Chief?
Yeah, I think that was pretty good, I would say.
Anyone else have questions for Josh? Well, thank you, Josh.
Yeah, not a problem.
Appreciate you presenting tonight.
Yeah, if you guys have any other questions, feel free to reach out to me or Tommy. Like I said, I'm local, so if you guys wanna see the stuff, I, this was a bad time because I had to come to Nebraska for a meeting. But if I get some time next week and you guys wanna see it, I don't have a problem driving out there and showing you guys.
Excellent, thank you, Josh.
Thank you so much. You guys have a great night.
You too. What's that? Okay. And at least this one over here.
This is for Sector.
Do you have someone coming online too or no?
Kaylee will probably join, they're on their way to Denver right now.
Okay.
So she'll probably join from the car.
Why is it gonna shut off that thing?
You had different meetings for each one, didn't you, Deanne?
What's that?
You had a different meeting for each one, right?
Yeah.
Looks like.
Yeah, I think she did too.
Thanks.
I just wanted to confirm as well.
Yeah, you're right, thank you. Could've we just did one? Could've we just done one?
Probably good to split them up, just so that each one kind of has their own in and out, especially so that the vendors couldn't necessarily join in, because it is public meetings, so they would have to go around rather than all three sitting together. That way they'd each got their own little entry. Because then the appointment would have been for an hour and a half and you had to tell them what time to join. Now it's each 30-minute block and that's all they get. They're really durable, right?
Yeah, they actually are.
Should be.
That should last, I'm sure that I've done that one time or another, so. While Eric gets ready, man.
I didn't know if you guys wanted to wait until your gal gets online.
I'll just tell her to go right now.
Okay.
Actually, I think she said it for 5 o'clock, is it a different wagon, is it the same wagon?
No, different.
Yeah, a little weight, just more of the, you know, obviously you got a little battery weight to keep them in, but then the camera, which is fairly lightweight, it's just more of the ruggedized. You know, just, you gotta build in layers of plastic on rubber, on plastic on rubber.
Not to get too far off topic, but we were up...
Do you have an HDMI hookup?
Um, it's in use.
Just for a presentation?
Yeah, I didn't want to kill you with PowerPoint.
Okay.
Yeah, I told Kaylee she can log in, so. Well, I'm Ashley, I'm with Sector. We are the public's technology upfitting company out of Urbandale. I'm only a couple hours from you guys.
And Ashley, if you wouldn't mind, just to step back, just because it will record into the call. Thank you very much.
So I'm Ashley, I'm with Sector. We are the upfitting company, technology support company that you'd be working with. So if you guys proceed with us, with GTAC, we would be the ones installing. In addition to that, we've got Kaylee joining. She's the one who was here, that you guys met last time we were here. We both came on site, and I think she also came on site the time before with our CEO. So Kaylee's in the car on her way to actually a GTAC event that Eric will be at later, later today. He made a special trip here to present to you guys and make sure that you understood all the ins and outs of GTAC. Sector operates out of Urbandale, like I said, so everything is within a couple hours of you. So one call, cellphone number, and that's the ability that we have to respond quickly. So pride ourselves on having a service van on the road at all times and things like that. So it's been a pleasure to even have the opportunity to come, so thank you.
Well, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
My name is Eric Bennett, I'm with GTAC Video. I am a retired police chief in a small town, I was actually a 10 officer agency in Missouri. I was chief there for 14 years and then I actually ran for city council after that and served two years on city council. So I've been to every city council meeting in St. Genevieve, Missouri for the last 16 years. So I appreciate your job, I appreciate the tough decisions you guys have to make. So thank you for having me in. Kind of hearing some of the questions that were asked earlier. Happy to answer any questions that you have, if you want to pose them in the form of a question, that would be fine too, just for your purposes, however you are more comfortable.
I guess just kind of from my start, just obviously we've got Motorola, we've got GTAC, and then Axon of course is, you know, up after you guys. Kind of give us the rundown. I mean, we, if I can speak for the whole council, we understand what a body camera is in the basics terms and why it's needed in today's world. Why GTAC?
Okay, so a little bit about GTAC. So we were formed in the 80s. It was actually a subsidiary of General Electric to manufacture rugged computers, rugged equipment for the military. That's still our biggest application. We produce a number of rugged laptops for the military, foreign and domestic. And then body cams, we've been in the body cam business again for the, you know, 30 years. Like everything else, it's continued to evolve, it's going to continue to evolve. You know, I think you're probably going to find, at least in my... You know, I think you're probably going to find, at least in my experience, that a lot of the answers that Josh gave are going to be pretty universal as far as the storage capabilities, the ability to, to refresh the equipment, to get new body cameras. We don't have a detachable battery with ours, but we will warranty the, the device itself. If it gets down to a, a certain percentage, eighty percent, seventy-five percent, whatever, battery life, we'll just send you a new one. Same, same as, as a lot of other competition, you know, as far as the ability to, to support the agencies. I think what separates us a little bit from the Motorolas and the Axons is, is, you know, they have huge, huge, they have the biggest cities in, in the country as far as, you know, the Dalises and the New Yorks and the, and we pride ourselves on, on being there, being present in front of you guys. You know, we do have, we have some state agencies, we have Nebraska State, we have Wyoming State. And then in other instances, as far as fish and game, we have Florida and, so we, we do have big agencies. I don't want to say that we're a mom and pop shop because that's not the case at all, but we do value our smaller customers as much as we do our big customers. Like I said, I was a chief for fourteen years of a ten, ten officer agency, that's where my heart is. You know, I, I want to make sure that, because I was overlooked by, by the companies servicing the, the Dalises and the Phoenixes and, so, so that is a, a large reason that I, reason that I even came to G-Tech. Just the customer support that they provide, the ability to, to answer the call and, and fix a problem quickly is really what we, what we strive for. We want to have referenceable customers, we want to make sure, I mean, we understand the, the job that these guys are doing, how important it is and, and how little room they have for error. So, you know, if there is an issue, we're, we're on it to fix it right away. We do offer the cloud service, again, something that kind of separates us from, from the others that are going to present tonight. We don't necessarily have a contract, so we will refresh this as long as you want, you can have us forever. We'll continue to give you the, the best of equipment with the upgrades. But if something goes wrong, and this is, again, just from my personal standpoint, from, from council and from the police chief's standpoint, you know, some of them, some of our competitors are doing like ten year contracts, which bind you to them for ten years, no matter if things are going well or not. We want to earn your business, we want to earn your continued business, so we don't make you sign a contract. If you guys need a contract, we're happy to enter into one with you. But we will be here as long as you, as long as you want us, and like I said, if something happens, if funding goes away or, you know, something, something changes that, that you decide you need to go somewhere else, the data is yours, we don't own the data. And we want to make sure that you guys are, are taken care of. So I think that that's probably a lot of what separates us from, from, from our competition, so.
So we're never locked in?
You're not locked in.
As long as we pay that subscription cost that year, we've got your service and our, our equipment's all fresh.
Yeah, so, so the agency that I left a few years ago as chief did lock into like a ten year contract with Axon and, you know, that was, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, they've got a great product, I'm not trying to, to bash them in any way. But that was always kind of a little bit scary for me in, in the public sector is committing the future boards to, to a contract that is that long. You know, I mean, I know with a lot of car leases and things like that, like we would do five year car leases. And, and much like this program, you know, we would, we got the council used to, you know, as two came on, two went off. So this, once you got up to a certain cost and they were comfortable paying that, everything was upfront, everything was above board, and they knew that we would have a good fleet of, of vehicles, and this is kind of the same way. Once, and, and I loved the way that you presented that, you know, this is, this is a recurring cost now. I mean, it's just the cost of doing business in law enforcement, obviously things changed, what, two thousand and fourteen, was that the, the big Ferguson thing? And it's, it, we'll never go back to, to a time that you, you don't have to document everything. And it's a shame, because I still come from the era of a police officer's word is, is, is their bond and, and we respect them and we trust them. But unfortunately, we have to take it to the next level now and, and I can tell you from my standpoint, and this doesn't matter at all to you guys probably, but I got to where I wouldn't even watch the, the footage when somebody came in with a complaint, we'd watch it together. I'd watch it with the complainant and a hundred percent of the time, the, the body, body camera footage cleared my officers, a hundred percent. And there's nothing like the look on their face when they're like, yeah, I didn't remember saying that, I'll, I'll just see myself out. So, so, I mean, it's a great thing, especially, you know, you have a police department that you support, that you appreciate and, and that you trust. And just to have that extra layer of, of protection is, is, is golden, so.
Now, with Chief's question to the Motorola, that what he was wanting sounded like it'd be handy to have, where it would tag together pieces of photo or a video from different sources from the one crime scene.
Correct.
Does your software allow for that?
It does, it does, it gets the same, same capability of, of sharing with the prosecutor, sharing with, with the public. One of the neater functions, and I didn't hear him specifically say this, and, and they may provide it also, but, you know, like I had lunch down at, is it Coogers? And they were talking about the, the, I was asking her about her surveillance footage and everything. If she linked that to her email, we would have the ability, the officer would have the ability to give her a business card with the link to, to their case file. And she could send that, that surveillance footage straight to the officer and he could put that with his case file in the, in the case management function also. Same with the ring doorbell footage, you know, cell phone video, if, if you have somebody that, that captured an event on, on their cell phone as a, as a reporting party, they can, they can send the link to that, provide the, the contact information and, and that person can upload it right then, when it's, when it's still fresh, when it's still, when everything is still, emotions are high and, and you can preserve that and not have to go back two or three times to get a surveillance footage or get ghosted by these people that now don't want to cooperate, so.
Now, Josh had referred to it being a manual process, is yours a manual process where you've got to piece everything together or does your software?
Um, I mean, other than just assigning it to a case, like which case you want that to come in as, and like I said, when you provide the link to that person, it's associated to the case number that you've provided. So, so, I mean, it's not, it's not automatic in that it's going to, sorry, I keep hitting the mic, collect that information without their consent. I mean, you know, it's still, will have to be initiated by whom, the source. But as far as the, our, our video, all of the body cam, there's, there's some triggering capabilities and there's no extra cost for that. And that's another good thing about our company, you know, a lot of the features that, that some of our competitors offer, like redaction and things like that, we offer it at no cost. So, you know, if you have, if you want, and it's all configurable for, for your agency, but if you wanted to set up a perimeter, you know, you have a hot call, the officer's on the call, his body cam and dash cam are running, when the secondary officer comes on, it's going to automatically activate that officer's system and then link those on, on the timestamp, so that, the, the video, you could watch the video both side by side and everything's going to happen at the same time, like it'll, it'll be linked as far as the, the duration of the call, so. Very solid system, like I said, it's a, it's a military grade system and, and the customer support, I think, is second to none, so.
And the feature listed here is, states the cloud plan sixty gig, is that, has to do with retention? Is that a monthly upload through some kind of cellular network?
I think that's the, that's the upload speeds as far as the, the ability to, to upload those when the officer gets back to the, to the, usually it's the station where they'll, they'll upload that from.
It says, yeah, it states, G-Tech Video HD sixty gig cloud plan, and then has all the features of redaction, transcription, evidence management and so on for the body cams, cloud storage for body cams. So is it just sixty gig per body cam? That it's?
It's a pooled amount, sort of sixty gigabytes, so if you have five, that's sixty per month.
Okay. That is, as far as growth wise, the retention kicks in and it's the unlimited retention. But upwards in this case, if we're looking at five, we're about three hundred gig then a month is all we would be looking for total amount of upload?
Yes, but it pulls together and it will, we've actually had this question because we have a larger department in Kansas that, that they show their own using about seven per month, seven gigabytes on average for all of their cameras. But their redaction, they've adjusted quite a bit, so you know, they used to keep, they used to redact a lot of things, now they don't, they used to keep for longer, now they don't. So now they're finding that they don't need as much, so really it can be adjusted based year over year. We can take it down, bring it up, put it unlimited if you end up in a situation where you need to have them. We would recommend that you do unlimited on the in-car video side if, if you choose to go that route as well, just because it records a lot more. But yeah, it's a pooled amount and it can be adjusted, it's not like there's self-consent, stone and all.
And then with the in-car system, I know some of the questions that were asked earlier, we also have a dual lens front camera that is a, that is LPR capable, so it can do the license plate recognition. Something, you know, some myths that typically come around that is that it's running every plate that it sees and is building up a case against everybody, that's not necessarily the case, it's just checking against hot files. So if a car gets stolen in, in Des Moines and they entered as stolen and it sees that plate, it's just running against the plates that have been entered as, as hot, so it, and it, it is something that the agency would, would manage the, the hot files, so they would, it's not going to automatically check against DOR without, without uploading that list that they put out every day. But we are in the process of integrating with flock cameras, which, which are a great system. I, I don't know if you guys are familiar, I've heard, a lot of cities are going to, to flock cameras. It also checks like an LPR system, but they're all tied together. So if you have a kidnapping in Texas and you have a plate, like it can track that through the flock system, you can see, okay, that plate came through Evansdale, you know, today at two o'clock and, and kind of check the, the, the progress of that. So our cameras will act in that network and actually extend the, the flock camera network to, to be able to check those, those LPR data against the, against the flock network. We do have, so, so there is a G-Tech redact that I believe is included in the, in the proposal here. We do also have some integrations with a company called Veritone that does some, some additional redaction and some AI capabilities with the, with the video, so. Lot of, lot of options, and like I said, we can, we can tailor, tailor make it for what your agency needs or what the police department needs.
Is the LPR included with your plan? That was quoted?
The camera that was quoted is the LPR camera, yes.
Okay.
The licensing for the LPR was not included in the original quote. So if we did add that, it would be about, MSRP is twenty-five per device per month. So we would need to adjust if we wanted to.
The camera will function regardless. It just won't be, it won't be checking against the LPR, the LPR files. So it'll still do the wide view like, like Motorola's and the narrow view for, for the, for the front facing camera. Camera system itself, again, does have some triggers, you can, we offer a holster trigger if you wanted it to, to kick on when, when an officer removes his weapon, his or her weapon. Of course, the lights, the, the, you know, if they have a shotgun rack or anything, they can put a trigger on that. Some K nine, agencies with K nines will put a trigger on the, the K nine door, when they have to pop the K nine door, it will automatically activate the camera. So number of features there that, that can be configured. It is, it is a completely user-based system, so the, the agency can, can set up the permissions that they want. Everything is, is set up to where the officer can't do more than they're allowed to do, they can't erase video, I mean, that's, that's pretty standard, but, you know, certainly we want to, to make sure that, that the integrity of the video is preserved. And I did bring the, the in-car video and the, the passenger compartment video with me, the, the cameras themselves. If you wanted to see the whole system in, in person, you're welcome to. Do you guys have any other questions?
Counsel, any additional questions for Eric tonight?
I'll leave my contact information too, if you guys need anything, again, just, just got my cell phone on there, don't, don't hesitate to call, but I appreciate your time, thank you for having me come.
Yeah, thank you, Eric, we appreciate it.
You guys have a great evening.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Nobody, you can just leave it here.
I might get in trouble for that one. If you guys have any additional questions or the numbers go, feel free to go.
So this would be the full facing camera with the, with the LPR lens and the, the fixed camera, the body camera. This would be a DVR and, so pretty, pretty sleek and everything, you know, again, pretty easy setup and installation.
Now, where's the DVR stored then?
So typically, a lot of agencies will put it behind the passenger seat on the cage.
Okay.
They can access that and it also keeps from running wires all the way to the trunk. Some agencies do put it in the trunk, it just depends on what your, what your preference is.
We would install them wherever you guys want, wherever you guys love them.
As far as the LPR, the, the full operation of the LPR, do you have a, a full?
Um, so they added this additional licensing out of the, I think it's in, kind of basically, since I'm sort of working with you till now, but it is a twenty-five dollar per month per camera fee, the LPR, to utilize the full system. As an LPR, it still will work with whatever other transactions you have. Yes, but we'll.
Well, good, thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, we appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you, have a good night, everybody.
Thank you, Kaylee.
Sorry, I couldn't be there.
Since we still have fourteen minutes, would it be okay if I ask a couple questions?
Sure, absolutely.
What, what is the timeframe looking as far as your process, what, what are you guys hoping to do, are you hoping to implement? I mean, since this is a special meeting, I don't know if this was something you were looking at, opening some funds up, if this was a possibility.
Yeah, we're gonna have a, we'll have a follow-up, we'll have a follow-up conversation at our next meeting, which is going to be September second. With, you know, just the thoughts from our team, you know, and then I would say probably somewhat shortly thereafter, maybe the next sixty to ninety days.
Would it be okay if we reached back out and say, oh, we just said to get a progress update, would that be reasonable?
Yeah.
What's the best dinner spot around here, guys?
What's that?
What's the best dinner spot?
Oh, the dinner, oh, I'd go up to the OP, it's a little difficult to get there right now, but.
Not too tough.
Not too tough.
It's called the OP, or the other place.
The other place.
The other place.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Depending which way you head it back down, out twenty to thirty-five.
Yeah, I live in Woodward, so I'm taking the, taking the Charger on gravel tonight.
Otherwise, in town's fairly limited, so you hit up, you know, Coogs, I don't think Lofties does dinner anymore. So it would really just be OP or the fast food, but if you keep going towards Waterloo, Starbucks Smokehouse is right next to the courtyard and the old John Deere tech buildings, tech works, if you kind of know where John Deere's were in downtown. Pretty decent little barbecue spot, not Kansas City level barbecue, but good. The pork's my favorite, and they'll throw a bunch of like melted cheese and jalapenos and stuff on it, kind of make it in almost like a Philly. And it's just pretty solid. So, but yeah, Starbucks is the name of the place, but yeah, if you want kind of a little slower, nicer sit-down, it comes out quick, but nicer little sit-down rather than fast food. McDonald's on the road gets old real fast.
Yeah, I've had.
I have a rule, I won't eat anywhere that I can eat in my hometown.
I try the same.
That's my rule.
I try the same.
What city did you say you're from?
St. Genevieve, so it's about sixty miles south of St. Louis, so straight down fifty-five is between St. Louis and Cape Girardeau.
You have Lambert's down there?
That's in Sykesville, that's a little far, that's Culture Decade.
Yeah. Springfield, Missouri has one.
Yeah, they have, and I think there's one in like Destin, Florida or Panama City Beach or something, there's, there's one down, down that way.
There's no chains in my town.
No.
Yeah, I'd love to have one of those here.
What's that?
Lambert's.
The next town up does, Perry does. Perry has McDonald's, Perry has a lot now, but yeah, we have a couple little mob and pop kind of restaurants that are only open for, you know, breakfast and brunch. And we have a bar, not sure I need to go to the bar.
Depends on what your standards at. Every bar makes, you know, frozen pizzas and, you know, if they got a fryer.
Trivia night.
There you go, I was gonna say, it's bar food.
And you had Cougars for lunch, they have the best cheeseburgers I have.
Well, I went with the the pork tenderloin, it was.
Oh, okay.
Well, when in Iowa.
Yeah, can't go wrong with that.
Yeah, it was good, it was good.
That's good. Yeah, my son loves it.
Is it like this big?
Hey, it's not ridiculous big.
No, it's not.
It, it, you know.
You can finish it.
Oh, yeah.
Not like Newton's.
I was gonna say, we can send you somewhere.
We can send you to Newt's.
Plate and a half.
And it's funny because they still put just a regular little bun on it. And you're like, what, what is the point? Why?
It's novelty.
Just put a side of toast on it, it's begun.
There's some places that should be spread with it.
This is gonna be completely random, but are you a country music fan at all?
Uh, not, not directly, but I listen to everything. I mean, I, I.
So much like Vince Gill.
There, I was just gonna say, I know where you're going with it.
I knew that was coming.
I named, I named my daughter after a Vince Gill song.
There you go, yes, I have, that one I actually, I'm terrible at seeing somebody's face and be like, oh, you look like even your mom or your dad, or I just, I just don't see the resemblance. That one I picked up on, somebody showed me younger Vince Gill and I'm like, oh, no, okay, I see, yeah. Like, if we were a little closer in age, I'd have loved to been him in his prime because I'd have went out to Vegas and been like, open the door for me, please, where's my limo? Been one of the impersonators and snuck in some high-rate places. But yes, you are correct, I will own that one, yep, yep.
I'm a fan, so that was an album.
Yeah, no, even if it wasn't, I still don't take any offense.
Yeah, that's the question.
I, I did sing, sang a lot in school and things out, now it's just more for fun. I, I don't have the country twang.
You're not a supporter.
I, I've tried, I would love to, I do like some of the, I'm more rock probably, you know, more upfront, but I mean, good music is good music, I, there's a lot of country, there's a lot of country crossover that kind of blends in with a little heavier guitar that I love. You get into, oh, shoot, even back in the days, some of the, what was it, Jason Aldean's? They kind of blend a little bit in, Hardy's even trying some of it nowadays, you know, they're just a little bit of both. Um, I like some of his stuff, so yeah, so yeah, no, no, not, not near the country twang. And as a kid, I could pull off cowboy boots, I can't anymore, I'm too much of a, of a city boy now. I, yep, it's suit and tie, I can't do the cowboy hat and boots anymore. I've tried, eh, it does not work, the, the wife will disown me.
Stay in your lane.
Yes, exactly, I was like, fine, I can pull off suit and tie, I'll, I'll just take that, throw a sport coat on, I'm good.
What do you guys do outside of the council?
I own People's Appliance, um, local, uh, sales and service company.
I'm a technology consultant for creative planning, so a big wealth management firm, but does a lot of outsourced servicing for their clients. So I manage and operate as a C I O for a lot of corporate here, for other corporations. So, yeah, a lot of this tech stuff's right up my wheelhouse.
Retired nurse. Retired office manager of the waterworks department.
Sandy just wanted a chair upgrade, so she came from across the hall there and just.
Upgrade, I'm, some days I'm not so sure. Full-time. Yep.
Very good, we still had a part-time mayor in our city, so. How long you been mayor?
Just four years. Seems longer. Yeah, I've been with the city for fifteen, so.
Is it elected, uh, every four years, term?
Two. Yep.
Yep, that's sneaking, sneaking up on us real soon.
Yeah, you're up first.
There's three of us, mayor, myself, and Dick. Thank you guys, and Dottie, are you up? Okay, so I have four, three counsel and the mayor.
We'll consider the source.
My husband's talking about my first, what is it, uh, school council?
On the school board.
School board, yeah. It's like, looks like, uh, we got elections coming up, maybe she'll come in. Sure. Go ahead. It's like, I'm not sure we have time for that, but okay. Five kids, sure.
Oh, God.
Well, that's why he's on the school board.
I know, honestly, we should, but it's just, it's when you, when you volunteer so much for your kids' stuff. And then you also have children in A A U and traveling and church, and it just, it all adds up.
The wife put a stop, I do, well, fire rescue as well, and addition to this have been on, so the volunteer stuff. I've known, you know, a lot of these officers for many years, actually, I should say it the other way, they've known me for many years. But I had an opportunity come up, I love being in it, love teaching, loving, and the trailer that travels around the state, Sem Iowa, out of the University of Iowa, are always looking for, you know, paid instructors to go do it, they're like, we would love to have you. Took it home to my wife, and she goes, sure, but what are you giving up? There is no more adding, I, uh, I have my limit, uh, we'll call it within my marriage, so.
That works.
I found out my wife doesn't like me to introduce my first wife when we go places.
Oh, yeah, don't do that, we don't like that.
Uh, I've been with the department for about twenty-five years, I've been a chief since nineteen.
You guys have a residency, you guys live in the city?
Uh, well, I think we have a thirty minute response.
That's shorter than a lot, I just met with Story City a few weeks ago and he's got forty-five minutes left. He's not very happy about it, but.
There's a lot of departments that are going away from that, just.
It's to open up the pool, yeah.
Their recruitment, yep.
That was a big hit back during COVID and the great resignation stuff, wasn't it? A lot of departments were faced trying to get people and they were having to look real hard on distance.
Would you guys want me to shut off the lighting or not?
I'm good.
Okay.
It don't matter to me.
Especially if they're just talking.
Were any of these? Like a local company, I was thinking that when we got bids, when Sergeant Newman brought these to us. Wasn't one of these like a local company?
This one was the most local, yeah, because they're from Irwin now.
I don't know why, I was thinking there was another one from like Waterbury.
The resellers stuff that got out of it, that we can like.
Um, so I think we also got on the installation for Motorola.
Oh.
Because they called us up and asked for an investor, because they don't install their own. We can install it, it'd be your install. Um, did you also get all of those referrals that I gave you essentially? At our last, at our last meeting? I think you would ask for just referrals of people that have used the systems.
Hey, Will.
Hi, Deanne, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, sounds good. Are we waiting on anyone?
Nope, just you.
Okay, sounds good, uh, hope, hope that I was on time here.
Yep, right on time.
Yep, excited to talk to you guys about, uh, body cameras and, uh, in-car cameras, been working on these projects with Sergeant Newman. So just out of curiosity, is there a certain, uh, product or or discussion that you want to start with? Any questions top of mind before we we dive into anything?
Sergeant Newman? No, just, just let her rip.
And say, Will, I can give you a place, I can give you a place to start, Will, so we've also been looking, uh, had presentations today from Motorola and G-TAC. And kind of the, the premise obviously is the same, um, you know, counsel, I think overall understands what a body camera is and what its base purpose is for. But, um, really, the, the same question I've kind of proposed to the others was, why Axon? So why, why are you, obviously, we're looking at different manufacturers, why should we consider Axon?
No problem, I put together a few slides here, um, just trying to figure out how to share my screen. I've used Teams at my old job, but, uh.
Up top, right next to the leave button, there should be a share up arrow.
Yeah, I gotta mess with my system settings here just for a second because I didn't have it configured for screen sharing with Teams, so. I'm, I honestly, I might have to jump out of the meeting and back in after I change the setting. So if I drop out, I will be back in thirty seconds.
He's on a Mac. Oh. I know exactly the setting he needed to change. And it doesn't let you do it on the fly, you have to completely close the application and reopen it.
Sorry about that.
No, you're fine.
Yep, no, I, I don't have the, uh, Teams app downloaded, so I just had to, uh, set it up for screen sharing on my, uh, computer here. Here we go, just wanna make sure I can share audio. You know what, I don't think I need to, okay. Let me know if you guys can see my screen.
Yes.
Okay. So just a couple slides here on our body and dashboard cam, or our body cameras and dashboard cameras. Basically, what, what's really gonna stand out, um, with the package that we've put together for you guys are two things, and that's device connectivity and real-time translation. So I'll start with real-time translation. Sergeant Newman told me that he does encounter a lot of foreign language speakers in the community. And this is actually a brand-new feature that just went live this year, but our body camera can actually translate up to fifty languages, um, in real time. And it behaves just like a walkie-talkie, so, um, you can speak to it in English, or, all right, so there's auto-detection. If, if you don't know what language they're speaking, you can just press the button and essentially it's gonna say, it's detected that French is being spoken, or it's detected that Spanish is being spoken. Then it's gonna take in what that subject is saying and spit it out in English for Sergeant Newman. And then Sergeant Newman can hold the button down like a walkie-talkie again, talk to it in English, and it's going to translate back to that subject in whatever language they're speaking. This video gives a brief, um, example of that, I don't know if you're gonna be able to hear it, though. Can you guys hear anything?
No.
Okay. I do want you guys to be able to hear this, so I'm gonna try to fix that, um. It's a bit of a problem that I'm not on the Teams app. But, uh, I might just have to like email this over to Sergeant Newman, I don't think I'm gonna be able to share audio, unfortunately. So. I apologize for that. Anyway, does, does anyone have any questions about the real-time translation, um, now that I can't really show you how it works on this video?
Sounds pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So, yeah, it, it, fifty languages, walkie-talkie-like, um, setup, so. The other thing that's gonna stand out about the Axon body cameras is the device connectivity feature that I've included on this package. So, um, you can actually track where the cameras are, uh, so it's gonna track those in-car cameras and those body cameras. It's gonna update a GPS location every thirty seconds, and then you can actually tap into the camera and livestream it. So if there's an event or a traffic stop that, uh, chief or sergeant wants to take a look at in, in real time, um, you can do that using the Axon body camera. And then also, um, yeah, so that real-time location and live streaming, uh, signal alerts. So when you, you know, let's say officer forgot to turn his camera on and he goes to pull his taser out of the holster, that camera's gonna automatically start recording, and that's the body camera and the in-car camera. Let's say he doesn't turn his camera on and all of a sudden there's a call and he turns his lights on in his car, that's gonna automatically start recording. And then the, you know, there's, there's playback, so. Let's say officer forgot to record something, you can go all the way back up to eighteen hours to go pull that footage to make sure that, you know, you don't miss something that you need for a court case or, or an evidence package, um, that someone forgot to record. Now, for uploading that evidence, what's gonna separate Axon is the seamless, uh, ability to upload evidence to evidence.com and share it. So when you plug that camera into the dock or when it's, um, connected to Wi-Fi, it's gonna automatically upload evidence to evidence.com, which is our evidence management website for, um, for, you know, the admin to go in and then you can share it straight to the DA's office or straight to the, uh, to the courts, um, via email. It's gonna send a link to that individual via email to, sorry, I'm getting a call, it's blasting in my face here. Here's. Sorry about that, um, so just the ability to share evidence very easily is something that, um, is gonna separate the Axon body cameras. Uh, any questions on, on what I just spoke about?
No.
Okay, okay. And after this presentation, I could show you guys how that works, if you want. So the in-car cameras, uh, one thing that Sergeant said would be a priority for the agency is to include the ability to have automatic license plate readers on the equipment, so those in-car cameras that I've quoted for you include, uh, A L P R technology. It can scan up to three lanes at once by one camera, and, uh, you're gonna get a lot of plate reads if you're on a busy road all at once. Now, it can also pull, uh, hot lists from a N C I S hot list or the state hot list to, um, match these plates with anyone who has a warrant out, or, uh, if there's a, a license plate that's been flagged because they're looking for someone, it is going to pull that from the hot list, so this is just what it looks like. It'll ask if it's the correct read or not, uh, just to make sure that there aren't any mistakes. And then this video, you don't need audio for this one, will just show you, you know, officers driving down the street, how many different plates it's able and how quickly those plate numbers pop up, so. And so. And so, um, it can also scan plates, uh, of any car that's traveling under one hundred forty miles per hour. So if there's someone on the highway that's speeding really fast, as long as they're under a hundred and forty miles per hour, we're probably gonna get that plate.
Good to know.
Yeah.
You just stopped at one hundred and forty miles an hour?
Exactly, one sixty it is.
Anyways, um, last slide here, but just wanted to cover that, that location, the real-time location, and then also the live streaming, so, um, let's say there's an officer that's conducting a traffic stop on, uh, evidence.com, you'd be able to just go and click their little camera icon and then livestream the activity, and it does include audio. So. Those are the main features I wanted to highlight for you guys, there's a lot more to it, but those are, in my mind, what differentiate, um, Axon from, from probably what you were looking at earlier today.
So when they're, when you have the LPR reader, are, it's, is it only gonna give you the ones that, um, um, you wanna possibly pull over? I mean, y- you know, you have it reading all these, but is it gonna say, you need to stop this one, or, I mean, you can kind of understand what I'm saying, right?
No, yeah, I understand, great question. So it's going to, uh, scan every plate, so it's not just gonna be only license plates that are on the hot list, but, um, if there is a plate that pops up that is on the hot list, and, uh, Deanne, my colleague Brayden is in here just to, um, make sure that everything I say is, is one hundred percent accurate and clear. Brayden, I do believe that, um, there would be a notification on their MDT if there was a plate that was scanned that, that is on a hot list. Is, is that correct, or is?
Yeah, that's correct, and thanks, thanks for letting me sit in here on the background tier. Can everybody hear me okay, just to make sure?
Yes.
Right on. Yeah, I appreciate it, I, I represent agencies along with them under a hundred sworn, so. Appreciate you all letting me to join, um, that would be accurate, that out of the box, it is gonna pull any list off of NCIC, which is a known nationwide hot list for agencies across, uh, all of America. And then our goal down the line is, at some point, to be able to integrate the state hot list as well, as we're working on getting that information from, uh, Iowa specifically, so that is a roadmap, but out of the box, they would have NCIC automated and hands-off, and then the agency, if they have, you know, a known vehicle, is, unfortunately, I'm sure most towns have of, uh, say like a Cadillac converter theft, or, or, uh, somebody that's hit the last four gas stations in your town, uh, they can push through that direct actual license plate as well as a hot list that'll push through automatically to all of that, uh, fleet-wide for them to be able to search for as well. And that's gonna push that directly through their MDT to let them know, hey, here's the plate that you got a hit on, once you confirm, it'll give that individual's information and why they have a hit on them as well.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Um, real quick, too, the other thing I did want to hit on, too, I was just pulling kind of the records of people in your, uh, jurisdiction, and so I know, I can imagine that the police department works hand-in-hand a lot with, uh, both Waterloo and Cedar Falls being right next door to you, um, as I know this is a big investment for really any city going into this, and the question is really, you know, why Axon versus another company that we're investing, um, a good investment into, and I just did wanted to note that both Cedar Falls and Waterloo have made that investment on a rather, uh, lengthy ten-year contract with us. Um, so two, two cities right next door that are worth, um, you know, getting in contact with, asking them kind of why they made that, uh, decision as well, and you would get direct sharing if you went with, with Axon to those agencies, if you guys were working on a case next door with one another, that you guys would not have that direct internal C G S compliant sharing, um, should you choose another vendor. So did just want to highlight that, it's kind of some next-door, uh, neighbor agencies that are using Axon today, and, uh, um, get a little bit of feedback from them as well.
Was Black Hawk County in that line, too, to commit?
Um, I could definitely pull that up, I was just pulling up, too, right in the background real quick. Um, well, I didn't want to jump right in on yours, but I can certainly, uh, look that up real quick for you guys as well.
No, you're good. Brayden's got a feature that, you know, lets him look at a map and see what everyone has, that I've been trying to get access to for a couple of weeks now, so I'm jealous of his ability to, to look into this for you guys.
Comes with the ten-year, I've been here way too long, but yes, I just pulled it up. Um, they, funny enough, are on a ten-year contract with us as well, so, um, all three of those agencies have signed, signed the longest, uh, uh, program that we offer, being a ten-year contract with Axon, yeah.
Well, when it comes to the hardware, I know we've heard other, you know, between Motorola and things, they're refresh so often body cameras after three years, and, uh, obviously, the warranty IC states on them. Do you guys do any upfront refreshes, or, or, well, I guess I'll call it a proactive or preemptive refresh of, like, the body cameras?
Yeah, so, oh, just specifically for the body cameras?
That was the one.
Because we do do refreshes for the in-car as well.
Yeah, I'd like to hear about that as well, if you offer.
Okay. Yeah, I'll just start with the in-car cameras, so, um, what I've quoted you guys is for a five-year contract. Um, at year five, we would, let me make sure I got this in here, um, because there are a couple of different scenarios. Yeah, so we gotta tap refresh at year five. So, in twenty thirty-one, January of twenty thirty-one, if we were to sign, you know, in the next couple weeks or months here, you would receive brand-new cameras, uh, and, and they would be covered by Axon. So all you would have to go and do is, um, like, repurchase your licenses and your software, so the ALPR and, and, um, real-time location alert, stuff like that, um, the actual hardware itself, you would get brand-new cameras, and then for the body cameras, we do it halfway through the contract, so at the two-and-a-half-year mark of your contract, you would receive, um, new cameras. And just to clarify, I'm gonna pull up a, uh, comparison document here, just find it, I've got a lot of tabs open. Um, here we go, oh, wait. Yeah, here we go, alright, I'm gonna share my screen again. Just let me know if you can see this. So Sergeant and I talked because at first, we were looking at six cameras, share them with all sworn officers, and, um, what we really reviewed here was that if you were to go with a bundle that we offer, because you do need a, even if you have six cameras, if you have eleven users, you're gonna need eleven licenses, so we went with is like, hey, if you just bundle this together, there's baked-in discounts, and, um, you're gonna get a cheaper overall cost than you would if you just go with an à la carte plan, and you have six total cameras but eleven users. Now, here's the, the caveat here is that, um, the starter bundle is gonna get you a tap halfway through the contract, but then at the end of that starter bundle, at the end of the five years, um, there is no tap baked into this contract. But on the right side here, we've got six cameras for eleven users, you are gonna get that tap refresh at the two-and-a-half and the five-year mark, so, so while you are paying more for this situation on the right, um, six cameras for eleven users, you do have, uh, the peace of mind that you are gonna get a fresh six cameras at not just the two-and-a-half, but also the five-year mark. Um, whereas with the starter bundle, you're gonna get that tap refresh at the two-and-a-half-year mark, but then at the end of the starter bundle contract, you would have to go and purchase new cameras.
And is that in-car cameras as well, on the right?
No, so this, this is two different body camera scenarios.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's, and that's, you're good, because that's what I was missing, I didn't see them listed there.
No problem. Uh, any, just to make sure that everything's clear here, is there any confusion on, uh, what you're seeing on this document? And by the way, so the AI, yeah, AI assistant is where you're getting your real-time translation, so that's on both of these device connectivities where you're getting your live streaming and your GPS tracking, um, so the biggest difference here is just the fact that you're gonna get eleven cameras, um, on the left, so like, one for every sworn officer, which I, I believe eleven is the count, right, Sergeant? But there's six on duty at once, and that was the reason for six if we're sharing here, so. That is the biggest difference. And, and then storage, so storage is baked into this bundle here on the left. Um, on the à la carte side, we did have to include unlimited storage, um, which is another reason why, like, you know, the à la carte plan can get more expensive than the, uh, bundles. Okay. Anything else that you guys, uh, want more information on or, or want to talk more about?
So the pricing on that sheet, does that include any of the in-car cameras?
No, so I can pull up the quote for the in-car cameras. I kept them separated on two different quotes, um. There you go. One sec, sorry, here we go. Okay, so this is your, uh, in-car camera quote, um, it's gonna have everything you need to run a successful in-car camera program for the next five years. To start off, you've got a cradle point, um, for each car, the number was five, correct, Sergeant? Five cars?
Yes.
Okay. Um, that's signal system, so what I talked about earlier, where, uh, if you turn your lights on, the cameras are gonna automatically start recording, um, the actual camera kits themselves, so forward-facing camera, and then that actually includes a rear-facing camera, so if there's someone in the backseat, we've got eyes on them. And then, um, tap refresh, so at the end of the five years, twenty thirty-one, you'd be getting five more in-car cameras, uh, brand-new. We've also got your licenses, so making sure that we have the ability to upload all this footage to evidence.com, and then the automatic license plate readers, uh, for all five in-cars, and then that real-time location and live streaming abilities right here. Um, unlimited storage, and, uh, from a services perspective, we're gonna send a team out and install all of this into your cars, which is included in this quote, and then, uh, everything's under warranty, so the five cameras are under warranty, and then your, your signal units, which is technically a, a hardware item, is also under warranty. And what that costs is a total of seventy-seven thousand, six seventy. Um, now, we do have this split up over five years, um, that can be slightly modified based off of your preferences, and I know Sergeant and I have had discussions about this, but, um, by the way, if you were to take all of this hardware and software, and on, we've included it in a bundle here as well for the in-cars, um, the cost unbundled would be ninety-four thousand, so there is some savings, uh, from bundling the in-car cameras as well.
And you're saying the seventy-seven, six seventy is in-car and body cameras with everything on that right-hand side tap quote?
So the seventy-seven, six seventy is for just the in-car cameras.
Just the in-car.
Yes, so the, uh, body cameras, um, is right here, so the body camera, the eleven, um, cameras with the starter bundle, which is what I would recommend, is sixty-five, eight forty-seven. So the two prices you would be looking at are, uh, seventy-seven for the in-car cameras and sixty-five for the, uh, body cameras.
Okay.
Any, uh, questions about the cost or, uh, thoughts?
None at this time, Will.
Okay.
Council, do you have any questions?
Not at the moment.
No, thank you, we appreciate your, the presentation and, um, for you answering the questions that we did have.
No problem, I, uh, I'll follow up with Sergeant, um, later this week, see how, uh, things go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.